We good? We good? Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to the official meeting for the February 25th, 2025, special town council meeting called for 6:00 P. M. It's 6:08. A meeting officially called to order. Town clerk, if we could do roll call, please.
Mayor Singer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Einstein.
Here.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Luskin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendel.
Here.
If we could all please rise and Chief Habbalo, can you lead us in a pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I want to welcome everyone to February. So first, we have some presentations and some swearing in of some police officers. We have, we're very fortunate this evening to have swearing in of two officers. The first one is PSA Ryan Kramer. If you could come up front, please. Come here. Yeah, to there, it's fine. PSA Ryan Kramer has successfully attended the police academy and is now a police officer undergoing field training. His hard work and determination with the town are commendable. If Officer Kramer, if you could repeat after me the following oath to swear you in. I, Officer Ryan Kramer. Do solemnly swear. That I am entitled. To hold the office.
To hold the office.
To which I am appointed.
To which I am appointed.
I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith, loyalty.
That I will bear true faith and loyalty.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And that will faithfully.
And that will faithfully.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
Perform all the duties of a police officer of the town of Golden Beach.
To perform all the duties of the town of Golden Beach.
Of which I am about to enter.
To which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity, my character.
My integrity, my character.
Or my public, or the public trust.
Or the public's trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
Community of Golden Beach.
Community of Golden Beach.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
If you could come up here, congratulations.
Mayor member. Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, the, this type of, this type of promotion is exactly the type that we like to celebrate here in Golden Beach. PSA Kramer started in the community as a lifeguard at the, at the beach, then he worked his way into the guardhouse. And then, believe it or not, he sponsored himself to the academy. And when we caught wind that he was going to put himself through, we said, no, 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 we have a tuition reimbursement program. And so through our tuition reimbursement program, we ended up sponsoring Officer Kramer to go to the academy. He is now going through his FTO phase, so for the next 16 weeks, he'll be tested and tried. And should he successfully complete his FTO phase, he will be a full-time police officer in the town before we promote any other officers because we like to reward the officers who have been with us as part of our training program and to promote from within. Ryan, I am extremely proud. I know that you've been waiting for this day a very, very, very long time. You've been with the city now five years? Four years in November. So congratulations on this promotion. Do not let me down.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Officer Frank Sotologo. Comes with five years of experience and knowledge. Officer Sotologo is a great addition to the Golden Beach family. If you could come to front, thank you. Repeat after me. I, Officer Frank Sotologo.
I, Officer Frank Sotolongo.
What?
I, Officer Frank Sotolongo.
Okay. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am entitled to hold the office.
That I am entitled to hold the office.
To which I am appointed.
To which I am appointed.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution and the government.
The Constitution and the government.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
Loyalty and allegiance.
Loyalty and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And will faithfully, without fear or favor.
And will faithfully, without fear or favor.
Perform all the duties of a police officer.
Perform all the duties of a police officer.
Of the town of Golden Beach.
Of the town of Golden Beach.
Which I'm about to enter.
Which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity, my character.
My integrity, my character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
I will always have the courage to hold myself.
And others accountable.
And others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
The community of Golden Beach.
The community of Golden Beach.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor. Mayor and members of the council, this is another one of those. Sotolongo.
There's a feedback on the mics.
This is another, this is another one of those.
What?
So you're like Mr. Bean in that Four Weddings and a Funeral? Yeah. Like he said his name correctly.
So let me, so let me just briefly, congratulations. Let me just briefly do two things. Ryan, come up, Ryan, come up to the microphone.
I know, right? Believe me, I didn't write this.
So real, real quick, this is what. Absolutely. So let me just real quick, so Officer Sotolongo actually interviewed here five years ago, maybe longer. At the time, we weren't looking for full-time. He actually ended up going to the city of, to Makasuki Indian Tribe where he served as a detective. So he brings with us, brings with him detective skills. His life circumstances have changed. His family business is going well. They need him to step up at the family business, but he needs a place where he can keep his license and give us part-time hours. And so we welcome him to our, to our agency. He's part of our part-time program to help augment the number of officers that we have patrolling our streets. As you know, we currently have 30 full-time law enforcement officers, including your manager, who serve and protect this community on any given day to keep our residents safe. Under the leadership of Chief Habbalo, we've grown our part-time program. I'd like for both officers to come to the mic and introduce their families. And families, please join Chief Habbalo for dinner tonight. Ryan and Officer Sotolongo, please introduce your families.
Hi, guys, good evening. This is my family over here, stand up. A quarter of my family, a quarter of them. My dad, my wonderful girlfriend, my 96-year-old great-grandmother, Ia, is Jeremy since forever. My grandmother, my grandfather, my mom, and my mom's boyfriend Ivan. And I'm forgetting my little brother, but he's at a baseball game right now, so.
Well, welcome, family. What?
And Officer Sotolongo, you're here?
Okay. And my family, please stand up. Here with me today is my lovely wife of 15 years, Riza, and my son of 14, Frank Junior.
Well, thank you, thank you for joining.
Do you want to get a picture of everyone in front of it?
Sure.
You guys come up in the council? Come up this way. Come closer. No. You'll cross the arms. Congratulations, gentlemen. Welcome to the team.
And family, we'd love for you to stay and watch our meeting, but you're more than welcome to join the captain that will be taking the family to dinner to welcome you to our family. Thank you so much for being here tonight. You don't have to stick around any longer.
All right, moving right along, motion to set agenda, additions, removals, removal of the items from the consent agenda or changes to the agenda. I have none. Fellow councilman?
Town staff, administration?
We have one more presentation, and we're going to do it real briefly and real quickly. So tonight is a, is a, is a change of the guard here in Golden Beach. For the last eight years, we've had the honor of having Councilmember Mendel serve on the, on the dais. And although we are going to be formally recognizing his lifetime achievement Thursday night in front of his family, there's a small token that the council wanted to provide you with. To say thank you for your eight years of service to our community, something that we want you to carry with you always, to think of us, the council and the staff. We're going to miss you. We're going to say kind things about you Thursday. I, I will tell you that when Councilmember Mendel first decided to run, I, I was shaking in my boots, you know, here was somebody younger than me now being my boss, you know, telling me all the great things that he had planned for our city. Councilmember Mendel, you kept us honest. You checked in on us, you checked our numbers, you found a lot of our errors. I grew a lot as a person. I don't want to get emotional tonight, but you taught me a lot about being humble, to be part of the family, to take care of the family. I know that the employees have respected the eight years where you've served as their advocate. And so on behalf of the 90 employees that call Golden Beach home, thank you for your eight years of watching out for us. We wish you luck in your future endeavors.
Jaime, you've been a great addition. You will definitely be missed, and we appreciate the time you put in over the years for the town of Golden Beach. You've definitely been a tremendous asset.
Thank you, and I'll leave it, I'll leave it all for, for Thursday when we have the, the swearing-in ceremony for the, for the better Mendel that's coming in.
The younger, more improved Mendel.
But thank you guys for this and to Alex and everyone, all the employees here who, again, as much as you say, quote unquote, that I gave you guys the last eight years, you guys really gave me a lot more. So thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Congrats. Following up with the motion to change additions, you have any, town manager?
Just the scribbler's errors under the manager's report, the film permit report was provided to you at the last meeting.
Okay. Moving on to good and welfare, do we have anyone, Lusseth for good and welfare?
Yes, sir, we have Dina Nicoletta.
Come on up.
Hi, everybody.
How are you?
Anyway, Dina Nicoletta, 522 North Parkway. I used to stand here in the past because I represented youth leadership and helped the children. I wish we could have that back again. I put the call out that we invite the kids back. I don't know if they need community service hours. I'm willing to commit my time and efforts toward that if they would like to bring that back. The other issue that I wanted to discuss today was recycling. You know, it's been a while that we took our recycling cans away and that process went away. You travel the world, and the whole world is recycling, and, and I look at our community, and we are not doing it at all.
We are.
Are we? I mean, well, if we are, then educate me so I can proceed because I want our community to be an example to the rest of the world, so.
Mayor, real quick, so about five years ago, six years ago, we noticed that our participation rate in recycling was less than 20%. So we decided to go to 100% participation. So all of our waste, 100% of your waste goes to a waste-to-energy plant, which creates electricity. So we have 100% participation without you having to do a single thing. All of your waste here in Golden Beach goes to waste-to-energy, which is 100% participation in a recycling program. And if we've done a poor job advertising that, we'll do a better job.
Even, so the plastics with biodegradables, they're all in one? Well, that's fascinating.
100% of your, of your refuge goes to waste energy.
Perfect. So I'll close if you, if I can lead a group again, I'd be more than willing to do that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nicoletta.
Thank you. Anyone else for good and welfare?
Yes, sir, I have a letter to read into the record. It reads, I am writing to ask the town to explore banning noisy gas-powered leaf blowers. Their use seems to have increased exponentially in recent years. The noise is almost constant, and I find it extremely disruptive to the peace and quiet of our community. There are alternatives that will accomplish similar results. Please protect our health and the environment. Thank you, Stephen Birmingham, 255 Golden Beach Drive.
Thank you. Any other?
No, sir.
Okay. What's that? Yes, come on up. Well, thank you.
Okay, hi. I just wanted to, I was told I had to come to the meeting about the putting green for the new, about getting a putting green. And also the other thing I was thinking about, because I was in Hollanddale, I mean, in Golden Isles, a bocce court. It's just like a.
Oh, yeah.
You know, something that kids and people can just play, it doesn't cost, it's not that big, so those two things, that's it.
Great suggestions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, any other good and welfare? Thank you.
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay, moving on to mayor's report. Quick items. First, fortunately, we didn't have a true election, but I want to congratulate Jesse Mendel, who's going to be sworn in Thursday night. Welcome to the family. As I said before, I think you'll be a great addition, and we look forward to having you. And again, Jaime, we can't thank you enough for all that you've done over the years, your time and dedication. Really appreciate it and never gone unnoticed. Second thing I want to point out that was pointed out to me, Golden Beach has been very secure, knock wood, I don't want to jinx it, and safe, but our neighboring communities had a, have had an uptick in crime with stolen cars and break-ins. So I urge all the residents to be diligent and lock your doors, do not leave your keys in your car. And if you see something, as they say, say something. Can't hurt to call 911 and notify the police. But again, Golden Beach has been safe and secure. We plan on keeping it. Chief Rudy Habbalo and his staff has done a phenomenal job, and we've been extremely proactive. We added the cameras on A1A. We've added more officers. We have K-9. I mean, we're doing everything we can. We're adding cameras to the beach. We've added additional cameras inside the guardhouse. We're eventually going to add additional cameras on A1A. So, you know, we, we've been extremely proactive. I need the residents also to be proactive, you know, don't make us an easy target. And like I said, if you see something, please say something. So I wanted to bring that out. Again, Thursday night is our swearing-in ceremony. I look forward, hopefully, all you will attend and many more. It's going to be a beautiful event. I have to thank the town management for putting in endless amount of hours and preparation for this event. They're trying to make it very special, and I'm sure it will be. So I urge you guys to come Thursday night. It starts at 6:00 P. M. And the two suggestions of the putting green and the bocce thing are good suggestions. Something we might consider, maybe down the road, put them in one in North Park and one in South Park. They would get great participation, especially bocce ball is a, is a great little game, and it's a great place for people to gather, and it's just something to consider. I think it's an excellent suggestion. With that, I'll move on to council comments. First, I'll start with vice mayor.
Thank you. Two things positive there. A shout out to Malky Porges, a longtime resident. She got married this weekend, and I was at the event at the beach, and it was, it was magnificent. The whole setup was beautiful, and she had the wedding at her house. It was just a beautiful event, and we have a, a great property, and it was just with the water in the background. It's a great venue, which a resident got to take advantage of after living here, I think, 25, 30 years. The second thing, on a safety note, and I know I've brought this up time and time again, I just keep on seeing these kids on scooters with, and two and three, and I see their parents with them also. It's just amazing to me. They don't have helmets on, and I, I think the emergency room, you read about these.
Well, I'm on the board of Aventura Hospital, and our number one ER situation is scooters. People with scooters, trauma injuries. And it used to be gunshots, and now it's scooter trauma.
It's just so scary that, you know, okay, the kids are going to be honest, at least have a helmet, you know? But I know we can't do anything about that. Our hands are tied, right?
State issue.
It's a state, okay. I mean, I just feel remiss that when I see this, I wish there was something that we could do or maybe in our town.
You can inform the residents, but they'll do what they want.
You know, do your child a service. If you need a helmet, we'll make one available to you, whatever.
I hear you.
People on, on A1A, I walked from here to Turnberry one day. The amount of scooters on the sidewalk and, and trying not to get hit by one on the way there, it's just, it's a new motor.
Sunny Isles did something about a year ago. They made people register their scooters. And if you didn't register your scooter, you get a ticket. I always found it was going to be extremely hard to enforce. I, I don't know how, how well it's going, but, you know, they tried to put some pressure on people that to register their scooters. So, and when they registered the scooters, they had these rules that they wanted them to wear helmets and everything. But it's tough to enforce because a lot of the scooter guys are people, are the delivery guys, Uber Eats and everything. They come in town and they, you know, fly by everyone.
It's sad.
Yeah. Thank you, vice mayor. Councilman Bernstein. Talk in the mic.
And also, Jaime, big shout out. Great having you on the council. Loved having you here. You're always there with questions, answers, and always supporting us in every event, and really appreciate having you.
I don't think I could start this without addressing Jaime. It's been so much fun having you on this council. Not only you've become a great friend, but I just feel like the things that you've helped implement in this city have just made this city so much better. We didn't know each other at all when you first started, and I've considered you a dear friend, a close friend for life, and I'm just proud to have served with you, and I'm looking forward to working with your family, so.
Welcome.
Dina, I think that's a great idea with the leadership. I know after COVID, it was, a lot of things got changed, and I don't know how we can do that, but whatever ways we can do that on whatever our sites are, whatever our magazines are, I'm sure we would love to help you. And the recycling, I, I think also, when we were doing the recycling, one of the issues before was also people constantly putting things in incorrect, and it was taking our guys so long to sort out that by going to this all in measure where someone was just doing it, it became easier, and we probably should promote that we do that.
Yeah, I think, I didn't know that, and I'm glad to know that, but when we're teaching our children or our friends or seeing it, they're, they're coming, and they're going, you don't recycle? And I didn't have those answers. My daughter comes in mortified by it, and it's, my answer is like, we don't recycle. I'm so glad to be educated in that.
We'll do better. We'll inform the residents in the next newsletter. Go on, I'm sorry.
The gas-burning blowers, I thought we did something with that, didn't?
With the what?
With the gas-blowing blowers. They're just, the leaf blowers, is there, is there an alternative that we can do for that?
I'll remind the council that when we debated this issue, a lot of it had to do with the economic stress that it would put on the individuals that come and serve our community. And so the council decided to just.
Why are they much more expensive?
And, and the batteries don't last as long. In fact, we went to the battery blowers as an organization, and we've done away with them. There's just not enough capacity and batteries to service a community of 1.2 miles.
I love the idea of putting green and bocce court, and I especially love them in, like you suggested, in the parkways. I think anything that we can do to increase people meeting and congregating would be, just make this community even better. I participated in the Dolphin Challenge this year, and it was just such an incredible event. I remember several years bef, I, I wasn't involved in cycling at the time, but we did some sort of cycling event, and just something that we might want to consider getting involved in. They do a lot of good for curing cancer, and they just, so much of the community was over there. They do runs and cycling and all sorts of participation, and it was just a really amazing event. And given our proximity to where it is and our statue right now, I think it would just not only help the community, but maybe increase our community where people can get to know each other a little better. Let's see, what else? That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bernstein. Councilwoman Luskin. Speak in the mic, please.
Congratulations, Alex, to your first MDCCMA. There it is back there. Luncheon, first time in 95 years for Golden Beach. So thank you for that. Second, I want to do a shout out for Uzi and Jennifer Hardoon. They're residents here, and they chaired this past Sunday's IDF event, and it was huge, it was poignant, and it was a big job, and they did a wonderful job, so kudos to them. On the sidewalks, they really have been very, very dirty lately. A lot from dogs, not even in the grass. It's right on the sidewalk, so want to talk about that just for a second. And then, Alex, we had talked a few months ago that you were putting some gravel around the trees on the median there, and you recently built it up with mulch, and it looks beautiful. The problem is, it's high up, there's nothing around it, so when it rains, it's getting all over the sidewalk. So I think that's just a quick housekeeping issue. Congratulations to Miguel Diaz. He was promoted to corporal. Singer Park. I really feel badly about Singer Park, and we've talked about this last month, and I wasn't really clear on the answer. And I've been walking there, and the truth be told, when you drive or you walk towards Singer Park, the front of it looks beautiful. But the minute you go anywhere in the back, and it's, it's getting worse. There's four pumps there. There's a hitch, there's a lawnmower, and it's becoming junky, and I will tell you, it's dangerous. Anyone can get back there. So, and I, I mean, it's Singer Park.
I agree. But we did make some changes. Town manager will.
It'll be my report.
Okay. Golden Beach Youth Leadership Group, Dina. Actually, Michael Glidden and I have been working on it, and since COVID, it did fall down the wayside. Just recently, within the past three weeks, I got an email from Dean Schiff, a student here. I'm going to work with Giselle, I think, for that now, and we're going to put that back together. But everything changed in Golden Beach, and after a while, it kind of fell out of fashion. Now I think it's a different story, so we appreciate your help with that, and we will get involved with that.
Is there, is there a way you can work with the schools to let them know that Golden Beach is?
I think we could probably do that because one of the things is the schools are pushing the kids to get community service, and this is a way to do it. But interestingly enough, I think the schools may have pulled back on that a little bit, too. It's been very quiet, but I think we can put it together, maybe a small group, but we'll snowball it into something.
I can't have you guys talk, I just need to, sorry.
Okay, and the last thing, Jaime. This is really personal for me to say, not goodbye to you, but so long. I was the one running against you when you picked up a packet. Professionally, I became known as the kid. And I was on a cruise, I'm just gonna take a minute to share this, and I called up Lisette. Well, it's the last day, did anyone pick up a packet? She says, well, he came in and picked up a ca, packet. And I remember being on a cruise and turning around and saying to my son, the kid picked up a packet. And he says back to me, don't worry, ma, we'll crush him. So, we ran into each other for the first time once or twice, but the time before that was at the pavilion where we did a small event, big event actually. And I got a chance to talk to him and he talked to me, I talked to him and I liked him. I really did. And it's, really tugs at my heartstrings to see you go. It really does. I remember introducing you to everybody and I remember you came to my house and let me look at a letter that you were gonna put out. And you said to me, well, I said, you have a great chance. You said, no, everyone I talked to says they're gonna vote for you. So, um, you made it. And the best part about it is, is that Ben came screaming back two years later. So, we were a complete group then, but we'll miss you, we love you and we're not letting you go. So, thank you for everything you've done. That's it for me.
Councilwoman Mendel, now this is your last Good and Well, I mean, council report, so.
I'm gonna make it short, actually. Don't go back to the mayor comments. So, I'll leave mo, I'll leave it all for, for Thursday, actually. But again, I want to thank each and every one of you here for the very kind words. Judy, I'm gonna miss you. And I'm not afraid to say it here, I'm gonna miss her the most.
I try not to be shy, it's true.
But, but I'll, I didn't prepare anything, but I will prepare something for Thursday. And like I just mentioned before, although it's been eight years, it's been a good amount of time, but the amount that I've gotten out of this has been, you know, invaluable, completely invaluable. Much more than I ever thought I would and much, a lot, much, much more than whatever I put in here. Uh, and that comes from all of you here who have really guided me and helped me understand certain aspects of, of government. All of you there who have also guided me and, and become friends at the end of the day. And as Alex said, the 90-plus employees we have in this town, which, again, I think I said that day one, we have A1-type people here. I think that's the first thing I said when, when I became elected. So, to, to everyone again, thank you very much for this. But I'll leave, I'll leave the comments for Thursday.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Mendel. Excuse me. Moving on to Town Manager Report and Project Update. Town Manager?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll try to be brief and I, I promise I will be brief. Couple of things. Look, we, we put on our events for our residents to participate and we understand that sometimes it's difficult to come out to our events. I, I gotta say, we were very disappointed in our Valentine's Day turnout. We had 16 residents and one resident brought like seven family members that live in Georgia, I think it is. So, we're gonna be looking and reevaluating the value of our events to make sure that we put our money where we're gonna get better turnout and better events. I will say that all of our residents loved our, our candies that we delivered to the house. In fact, most of you called for second and thirds. So, we're, we'll probably keep up the small cute things that we do to make our residents know that we appreciate them. But we are gonna be reevaluating the number of events that we have throughout the years to get our, a bigger bang for our buck. So, just want to say, we had a successful Valentine's Day event from an administration perspective, but we know that sometimes some of our events need to be scaled back. With that said, we will be putting on our spring break activities for our Golden Beach, for our youth. Hopefully, we'll capture more of our youth during those activities. So, right now, we have scheduled four really cool creative events to have kids come in and join us. We're gonna have a bounce house fair in South Park during both the public school spring break and during the private school spring break and also during the, the high Jewish holidays, we'll have activities there as well. We're gonna have board games and bingo, like a board game day, craft day, and also a movie lunch with the police chief in our bunker. So, it's gonna be pretty fun. We'll have at least one activity per, per day during that week. The idea is that we offer something, hopefully our residents will come out and, and participate. If they don't, we'll still offer it because it's good that we provide these type of services for our residents. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council for allowing us to host the Miami-Dade City and County Managers Association Meeting last week. It was the first time in 95 years that Golden Beach gets to host this organization. It's an organization of all managers here in Miami-Dade County and we had a, it was a sold-out house, there was no seats available and everyone truly enjoyed our beautiful space. And I say that because we're gonna start offering more activities in our, in our building. The mayor and the council will be hosting our, its first ever ethics training here in this facility for, for our neighboring cities. And so, as we begin to showcase the works that we've done here in Golden Beach, we're very proud of the fact that this building can now host those type of events. As it relates to two issues that didn't really come up during the discussion, I want to put our residents on notice, I don't tend to do that often, but all residents are fair warned. We will start enforcing the town's mandatory poop scooping of, curbing your animal. The amount of feces throughout our community is grotesque. I've instructed the police chief to give one warning and then a fine. So, we are gonna start enforcing that you curb your animals. Residents, please know that what we are seeing is that the majority of the time is your staff that isn't doing their job. So, if you have a nanny or a walker, please make sure that they start to curb their animals or they will be fined. Mr. Mayor, I love your park. Your park is near and dear to my heart. It's the first park that we named in Golden Beach. But as you know, as we've outgrown our spaces here on the south side of town, we are looking to expand that area behind Singer Park. Know that we've already commissioned Toga to create, if you haven't been to Center Island, we've already created an enclosure on, sorry, Center Island. We've already commissioned an enclosure on Center Island so we can start storing stuff. Behind Singer Park, we're actually gonna be enclosing it with beautiful black gates and taking up the alleyway so we could have for our space. As you know, real estate is in very high demand, so we're gonna be making that area much more beautiful. The fountain is finally back up and operational and, and we're getting complaints from the, from Golden, from the Howlandale Beach that the fountain's too loud. We're gonna be working on that. But know that Golden Beach is still very near and dear to my heart. We will spend the necessary resources to make that area wonderful again. Thursday night, Thursday night, we have our swearing-in ceremony. We're expecting over 250 guests to join us. The RSVPs are already at 230 plus, and that's not including our staff. The program will start sharp, the event starts at six. We will start the program sharply soon thereafter. I don't want to give a time so that people don't push the envelope. It is about a 35 to 40-minute program and then it's a beautiful sit-down dinner. So, we encourage all of our residents who haven't RSVP'd, who already done RSVP'd, to do so. And of course, we'll never turn away a resident at the door, but Thursday at 6 o'clock, please be mindful, it's gonna be a chilly night, so dress appropriately for that event. 6 PM, go at the Beach Pavilion. Our closed-circuit television program, Mr. Mayor, on the ocean has gone live. We already have four cameras on, on Ocean that are operational, bringing closure to our CCTV program. We do have cameras that have been installed in, in Turtle Park. So, as you're playing tennis and pickleball, know that we do have cameras that are monitoring the activities that are going on in that area. Mr. Mayor, we will be bringing to the council at your April meeting some additional locations where we want to expand our CCTV and know that our town attorney, sorry, our town lobbyist is working with the state legislature to change the state law to allow us to provide CCTV cameras on Ocean Boulevard, on A1A. As you know, right now, the state law prohibits, which is why we have the temporary trailers on A1A. So, CCTV is going very well. Right now, we're under a cone of silence as we are out to bid on our wellness center. On Monday at 2 PM, all bids are due and we will open bids here in the town council chambers. That will happen this coming Monday at 2 PM. Once the bids are open, we'll announce the bids and then they will be referred to a wellness center construction selection committee, which you will be appointing later on tonight. That committee will make a recommendation to the mayor and I as to who they feel is the most responsible and lowest bidder, not necessarily lowest bidder, most responsible, lowest bidder. And then the council will hopefully authorize us to enter, enter a contract at your March meeting and finalize the contract by the April meeting and to, and then we'll re-ground. This coming week, after we rest from the celebrations on Thursday, we will be starting to move all of the police personnel into our bunker so that we could begin knocking down the old town hall. We will not have a, a demolition ceremony. We'll have a groundbreaking when we start the wellness center. We will be preserving both the seal from the, from the chambers and the wall outside, but that, that facility is gonna be coming down. Talking about old and new. In the audience today, we have a former council member, Councilmember Charles Fistel, who has joined us tonight. He was a, a member of the city council, how many years ago now?
30.
From 94 to 99, welcome back to, to our, to your home. As you know, we do, we, we have two cool programs that we were gonna, we were gonna briefly talk about, but probably we're gonna hold off on that. But we are starting our wayfinding program and we, if you haven't seen in the newsletter, please look at the newsletter, we are looking at reimagining our strand entrance as part of our new wayfinding program. I know that many of you are, hold the strand near and dear to your heart, but we will be modernizing the strand as part of our new wayfinding program. I do have a presentation, but Mr. Mayor, given the time, we're gonna skip that for now. If we have time at the end, we'll go through that, just to let our residents know kind of what we're thinking there. And as you know, the police annex project has been put on hold while we wait for who the successful bidder for the wellness center program is. Know that the projects this year that we're focusing on, we just finished delivery of Turtle Park Pump Station Number One and we're gonna keep that grass lawn outside of that pump station open for our residents. We're not gonna use it for parking, so the idea is that we provide more green space for our residents as we build the wellness center. Wellness Center, wayfinding program on Ocean Boulevard are the two big projects. And as you know, come June, once pump station, once the pump station on North Island is delivered, we'll start the Golden Beach Drive repavement program. We're gonna be putting in curb gutters and changing on all the pavers along Golden Beach Drive and repaving Golden Beach Drive. Also, this Thurs, Thursday, is it Thursday or Wednesday, FDOT? Tomorrow, tomorrow, I'll be meeting with FDOT here in the city. As you know, Ocean Boulevard has a lot of potholes as you're leaving the strand going south. I have FDOT team members coming to meet me here tomorrow. We're gonna be evaluating what's going on there, we're gonna be finding a solution. Mr. Mayor, that is my report. With that said, I want to welcome and invite all residents to join us this Friday from 12 to 2 at the town Turtle Park Pavilion for our Black History Month Celebration, which is gonna be our employee luncheon and Black History Lunch at Turtle Park from 12 to 2. As always, I'd like to recognize our staff for the hard work that they continue to do and thank you for your hard work and dedication. Mr. Mayor, that's my report.
Perfect. Thank you. Moving on to Town Attorney Report. Nothing, thank you. Ordinance is second reading, we have none. Excuse me. Ordinance is second reading, we do have one. Item number one, ordinance to the town council amending the town of Golden Beach Employees' Pension Fund Pension Plan to provide an updated definition and optional forms of benefit.
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 24 Personnel Article II Retirement Division One General Employees by amending the town of Golden Beach Employees' Pension Plan at Section 24-31 Definitions and Section 24-34 Optional Forms of Benefits, Providing for Conflicts, Providing for Severability, Providing for Codification, Providing an Effective Date.
Excellent. I need a motion to approve. I need a second.
Mr. Mayor, with this ordinance does, it codifies that the town's chartered officers, and currently, we only have two chartered officers that are employees of this town, which is the town manager and the town clerk, that they have a, a, a different pension program for, for being chartered officers. We think that this is consistent with the executive benefit package that we offer our community and I think that our town clerk well deserves this, this, this offering.
Excellent. I have no comments. Council, comments? Public comments? Close to the public. Roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Item number L, ordinance is first reading. L2, an ordinance at town council amending town of Golden Beach's code of ordinance to clarify the permitted location and height of walls within Zone 1.
An ordinance of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, amending the town's code of ordinances by revising Article 4, Supplementary District Regulations, Division 7 Walls and Fences, Section 66-186, Height Restrictions Within Chapter 66 Zoning, to clarify the permitted location and heights of walls within Zone 1, Providing for Severability, Providing for Codification, Providing for Conflicts, and Providing an Effective Date.
Okay. Need a motion to approve? I need a second? A Town Manager, you want to review this one? What's that? I mean, Town Attorney, sorry, Steve.
No problem. Over the past, I would say, 60 to 90 days, there was some confusion between our planning staff and our manager as to the interpretation of the permitted lengths and heights of walls within Zone 1.
Zone 1 is my, is the beach.
It's the beach. That's correct. And, and this relates to walls between properties along the side of each property. Unfortunately, that resulted in an actual lawsuit that was filed against the town and one of the property owners by a neighboring property owner. And, and, you know, the, we don't see that there's a need to litigate this when it's clearly an issue of interpretation. And so, and, and simply a clarification. So, what we're proposing, and the manager's proposing, is to clarify how you measure both the height and the distance of a wall. And that's what this does. It's that simple. There's, there's really the, the, the.
So, is there a formula?
The heights remain, there is a formula and it's in the code and it tells you exactly how you start at Ocean Drive and you move east and for the first 60 feet, what the height of the wall can be and then for the next length of wall, which is the home itself and all patio decks that extend off of the home is another height and it drops down and then beyond that, it drops down again. We're not changing the heights, the drop down, anything. We're simply clarifying at what point the wall actually drops down, okay? And the issue was whether it dropped down at the home to the next from six feet to five feet or whether that six feet continued for the pad, the rear patio areas and pool deck areas. And that's the clarification. But it, it's remaining as it has been forever. For as long as this code provision has been in there, it's staying the same. It's just clarifying the fact that the rear patios are included within the area where a six-foot wall can extend.
I, I have a question. So, why are we doing an ordinance?
Because.
If it's in the code already.
It is in the code and there is a dispute over how it's interpreted. And there was some conflict even between the administration and the manager as to how to interpret it. And so, we felt the best way to resolve this was to just clarify the code. We don't need a judge to interpret this. It's, you know, if there is any conflict at all, we're, we're gonna go ahead and just clarify it here and it eliminates the need to, to litigate with anybody. So, that, that's the purpose of this.
And the conflict was because of privacy versus?
No, no. The conflict was a very simple issue. The, the way the code was written, you could have interpreted it to say that at the back of the house, the wall was supposed to drop down, okay? It actually said, along patios and the main house, you could have the wall continue at the six-foot height. So, the way it has been applied historically is, the first 60 feet from Ocean Drive is six feet. Then, when you get to the home, it was continued at six feet. And then, the code actually said, the main, patios and the main house. The conflict was that our planners felt that that meant patios that were in front of the main house as opposed to behind the main house, even though I, I've never really, when I read it, I didn't see any issue at all, but I understand after talking to him how he could read it that way, okay? So, now, we're simply clarifying that that wall can continue for privacy purposes, obviously, for both the distance of the house and any pool patio deck that you may have, okay? So, that's it. That's the only, there, there's one other change that they refer to the height of the wall being measured from the ground floor. What I think that means is grade because walls aren't, sidewalks aren't built on your ground floor.
Correct.
Okay, so, we're clarifying that it means the grade of the property where the wall is, not the ground floor of the house. Okay? That's the sole purpose of this.
Okay, any counsel? Go on, go on, Ben.
Just real quickly, so, there are some houses on the ocean and I don't know through how this happens, but let's say in the front, the ground is here, okay?
You're, you're talking about the front wall.
Front wall.
He's talking about sidewalks.
Okay, I just. Yeah, no, this is not, this does not relate to the front wall.
This is not, it's not with front walls.
Doesn't have anything to do with it.
Side yards, side yards.
I was just wondering how they measured them. The, the front walls have a different, this is a unique provision. Zone 1 and the sidewalk.
This is sidewalk.
Not, not, let's not, hey, okay, go.
Any other questions on these walls? Okay.
This is, okay, go ahead.
Go on, I'm sorry, Town.
No, I was gonna say, this is first reading, it is not a public hearing. However, if you want to entertain public comment, I would simply ask that it be directed to this ordinance and not the ongoing litigation, which I would ask you not to entertain any, any comments about or certainly not respond to.
Does anyone have any comments on this? Hold on. Go on. You need to identify yourself.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is.
I can't hear you.
My name is Mark Grafton. I'm an attorney at Schubert Law Group in downtown Miami. I'm here today representing Chris and Carolyn Gilson, who reside at 601 Ocean. Most of the characterization of what kind of transpired leading up to this point, we agree with. Quite frankly, I think that was a pretty fair summary of a lot of it. There's a couple points that I'll get into that I have a little bit of a disagreement on, but I'll just start with a quick summary of the relevant background facts. And again, this is really an attempt to provide an after-the-fact justification or clarification, depending on how you view it, to the owner of 605 Ocean Boulevard, and that's the Cardone residence. So, this property owner constructed a rear wall on the north side of his property without obtaining a permit. And again, I'm not going to get into any of the litigation. I agree, that's not appropriate for today. This is really directed to what led to this ordinance. So, the town has acknowledged that he did that without obtaining a permit. The town didn't, chose to not take any action. He then started to construct a similar wall on the south side of his property, which abuts my client's property. He did that without first seeking a permit. My client raised the alarm. He was required to go through the process to apply for a permit. And while the permit was being reviewed, there was a comment that said, this wall does not comply with our code. There's a requirement to have a step-down. And his rear patio deck extended, not five feet, not 10 feet, not 20 feet, not 30 feet, but this was a patio deck, pool deck, that extended significantly almost all the way to the beach. And so, what we have now is a wall, a six-foot wall, that extends 55 feet after the end of the house. And so, I think that's a significant change in what was ever intended as part of that step-down. So, in any event, the town manager elected to override those comments and caused the plans to be approved. There's a lawsuit. We're not going to get into that. Shortly after approving the plans, at the November 19th meeting, the town manager announced this zoning in progress, and that there was going to be consideration of changing this issue. He described the issue as follows. Where our code requires that you step down your wall past your patio, no one puts in patios anymore. These don't exist on modern homes. The town manager went on to explain that the very simple idea behind this proposal is if you want to have privacy in your yard, you should be afforded to have a six-foot wall extend behind your home for, and I quote, "20 to 25 feet," and then have it step down from there. The town has already approved, notwithstanding the fact that you're now considering this ordinance, the town has already approved a 55-foot-long, six-foot wall after the end of 605 Ocean. 55 feet, not 20 to 25 feet. So, adopting this amendment now, you should be asking, why didn't this come to us before we took action on a permit? Are we admitting that we did not have the correct code in place at the time that we acted on that? I think it's an admission that the code is not what it should have been for you to take that action. You're going to hear from Carolyn Travis, and, excuse me, Carolyn Gilson and Chris Gilson, about how immensely negative having this large wall is for their quality of life. And I'll ask them to come up and speak now, but I'll just close by saying, we really hope that you take this into consideration and deny this ill-advised ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this?
May we come up to...
Sure.
We're Chris and Carolyn Gilson at 601 Ocean Boulevard. And you may be asking yourselves, well, why do we keep beating our heads against our neighbor's cement wall when Alex so clearly wants them to have this? And one issue is that we love this town. We love our house. We love our neighbors. We plan to stay here until they take us out on gurneys. Our neighbor to the north is selling his property. If we're looking for a balance between the rights of someone who, in your words, Alex, you know, is spending millions of dollars to improve their property, and the old homeowners who are standing in their way, then I believe it would begin with, well, what do they have at stake here? I like Grant. You know, this isn't personal, but Grant's has his house on the market. If somebody comes up with 42 million in crypto, he's out of here. We want to stay. We also see a problem with an ordinance that selects a privileged group, which is the people who are spending millions of dollars on their property immediately, but not the people who have been living there and spending our X amount of dollars on the property for all of these years. This is the second time. And let me preface this by saying, you know, we think very highly of this municipal government. We think that you're a visionary. We think that the council has been both visionary and responsive. And I'm proud to say that I live here, and to tell people that, you know, I'm a resident. I just hate to see a two-tier zoning plan where, like a marketing plan, where you're trying to identify the people who are the most valuable to you, and concentrate all your resources on them. You know, it seems that the, in this case, what Grant's, what Grant is looking for seems to be the town's objective, and we're freighting the zoning code in order to make this possible for him. So, this may be the first test case of your vision for a new plan, but I think you're seeing the downside risk to the people who are affected. When we go outside now, you know, this is, I'm sorry, this isn't the larger picture, but this is what you see. If I sit down at my table, or I sit down in a lounge chair.
And to give you a perspective.
Yeah.
That's me. I'm five foot two.
And if the purpose was to obtain privacy, let's remember, you know, that Grant's deck...
Pardon?
A big... Oh, yes, of course.
Yes.
So, we have a situation where, through code or choice, Grant's deck is actually six feet above ours. So, he has the same degree of view that he had before he built the wall, and we have the same degree of view of his property and the Cardones, as he did before, as we did before we built the wall. So, I don't believe that privacy was the issue here. I think it may be a desire for symmetry so that he could build the illegal wall on our side to match the illegal wall that he had on the north side, to make it more attractive to people who want to buy his house.
Need to clarify that this ordinance is not because of Cardone's, you know, building. When we look at an ordinance, we look at how it affects the whole town of Golden Beach, not one single residence. So, this ordinance, basically, as the town attorney said, is to clarify what's already in the code, okay? We're not changing anything, correct?
Well, in all the years we've lived here, it has been six feet to the back of the house, or maybe to extend, you know, to a patio area right outside, and then down to four and down to two, and we've lived here 30 years. I've never heard of a wall being able to extend as far as somebody decides their patio goes, which is more than halfway down our backyard.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
Town attorney or town manager?
Mayor, let me just say, let me just say this to the Gilsons, because we've been working together for many, many years, and you know that I always try to find a win-win. Sometimes, when our neighbors start to bring up new issues or are starting to reconstruct, we identify the weaknesses in our code, and we then address it. So, sometimes something doesn't become apparent to us until we are actually asked to test it. In this particular case, Mayor and counsel, I don't think that our codes, I don't think that the intent of our code has ever been that you drop your wall at the rear of your property and have no six-foot portion beyond the rear of your home. When our zoning administrator, who's new at this, who has started doing our zoning reviews recently, and is not the town's planner, ruled, I believe in error, that the code forces you to drop the wall, I said, absolutely not. We have to think about legislative intent and how my staff, our staff, is applying that. So, I overrode, I overrode him, and I said, absolutely, I believe that all of our homes, not the Cardones, not the Gilsons, not the Singers, all of our homes should have a certain level of privacy. And yes, I gave out a theoretical number for the purposes of zoning in progress discussion, hoping that this council would decide what that number would be. But our intent has never been that at the back of your wall, you get no privacy in your rear lot. And in the code, it talks about in your patio area. The new modern homes don't define patio areas. They talk about outdoor barbecue, summer kitchens, pool decks, but they don't use the actual word patio area. And so, that's where Chris and I, I told Chris, no, listen, this applicant should have a depth afforded to him of a six-foot that draws to four-foot. And in fact, I believe the wall ends at the neighbor's patio area, and it doesn't go beyond their patio area, because they do have a defined patio area. And I believe the wall drops at the end of their patio, the four feet. And as it relates to the wall height, and I know that Ms. Gilson, I'm also, I'm only 5'8", but you measure your wall height not from the adjacent property, from your property. And Councilman Luskin is one of the biggest victims of this. When the property to the north of her erected their wall, it starts four feet above her head, because it's from the, it's from your property, from where your wall begins, not from your neighbor's. And so, in some cases, believe it or not, in the case of John Kessler, Mr. Kessler, there's a 17-foot wall behind Kessler's house, because the homes on Ocean Boulevard start that much higher. So, you measure your, you measure the wall height from the property owner who's building the wall. And so, for our older homes, and I love all of our older homes, in fact, if it were up to me, we would pass a historic preservation ordinance and preserve all of our older homes. But for some of our older homes that are in a...
Not good for taxes.
That are in, that are in a valley, that are in a valley, or who are built smaller forward, as we're seeing these new homes come on board, we're trying to balance the rights of both, because both have a right. It's not, it's not the rights of one over the rights of someone else. It's how do we find that balance? And I believe that the attorney has done an excellent job in trying to help us guide our staff as to, I don't think the intent was ever you don't get privacy beyond the rear of your home. And there's another issue that we're not going to talk at length today, but the town manager, sorry, the town mayor and I are working with the attorneys to talk about how far you could build your house, because some of the older homes make it very prohibitive for a new lot owner to build a home on Ocean Boulevard. So, and I announced that at the B R E B, we are doing zoning in progress as it relates to how long your home could be on Ocean Boulevard, which may have a more significant impact on the older homes in town, because we need to be adaptive to the trends that we're seeing in our community. And this has never been because of Mr., yes, I will, I will accept publicly that because of the applicant's request, this came to light. We hadn't had this issue before, but that does not negate my responsibility to try to find a solution when our code is clearly not clear, and when legislative intent isn't being followed.
So, I have one question. If we didn't have this ordinance, okay, it would still apply the same as it is, correct? We didn't change this ordinance, they still could build that wall all the way out, correct?
Have a sign? Yeah. Okay. Currently, you can have a wall that extends from the front property line all the way down at six feet to the end of your patio, okay? Patio, okay? There, for the first time, our new planner read this section when the Cardone's plans came in, and said, wait a minute, I don't read it that way. The way I read it is, is that when you get to the back of your house, you have to drop that six-foot wall down, okay?
How far down?
To four. No. To five, then...
Six foot?
Yes, six, then to four. So, his, the way he read this was, when you, when that wall gets to the back of the house, it goes down four feet, okay?
It goes down two, four feet?
It goes down two, four feet, and by two feet, okay? Alex looked at that and said, that's not the way I read this, okay? On top of that, if it's dropping down to four feet, that really is not going to provide sufficient privacy for the people in their backyards, on their pool decks, and wherever they are. So, Alex, as the chief enforcement officer of the code, not our contract planner, made a decision that it was going to apply the way I first explained it to you, which is that it could extend.
And that was our intention, correct?
That, that's what the code...
It's how every other house on Ocean has.
That's what the code states.
When you look at all the other homes on Ocean, that's what they have.
For the first, for the first time, we have somebody in our administration who said, no, I don't read your code the way you do.
Right. So, what we're doing is clarifying.
Alex said, you're wrong. This is the way we apply it, and he decided that that's the way the permit should be issued, okay? That gave rise to a lawsuit. We have been sued by the Gilsons, and they're claiming that we are misapplying our code, that Alex made a mistake. Forget about the fact that he's the guy's boss, and they raise all sorts of issues. But at the end of the day, they're saying, he misapplied the code, that the planner was correct. And they're asking that the planner's interpretation be applied here, so that that wall has to come down.
I got you.
So, this, this doesn't, we're not changing heights, we're not changing the way you measure a wall, nothing at all. This simply says what we have, what Alex interpreted and what we have always had as our code, that the wall goes for the length of your patios. Now, if that's a bad policy decision, okay, and it doesn't fit in between new homes and old homes and everything else, that's a whole nother issue. If you want to explore the policy issues of whether walls should be allowed that high, that far back, we can come back and deal with that. This is simply to make clear what the current code says, and it codifies in law what the current code says.
I got you.
And it should put to rest the lawsuit. Now, I'm not saying it's going to put to rest the, make them comfortable, or give them, you know, the fact, the wall, the wall is there, and this may not solve that problem for them, but for us as a municipality, this eliminates a lawsuit that we have, and that's our goal.
Okay.
Let me just say two things. Number one, yes, I have no problem with it, you know, extending to their patio. They have a patio, and they have like 10 steps down, then they have a deck, and their pool is all the way at the end. If it was for the patio, we wouldn't be here, but it's for the patio, past the patio, past our pool deck, more than halfway down our backyard. And if anybody, I would really like to invite any one of you to please come to our house. It's like being in a prison exercise yard. And not only that, but it opens a door, not only for us, but for every older resident here, to have this happen to them. If somebody buys the property on our south side and decides to build, we could be walled in on both sides. And it really does, it affects our property value, it affects our view, and it affects the enjoyment of our property.
And that, and that's a legitimate policy concern.
Yes, go on.
And just correct me if I'm wrong on some of the stuff, because I've walked on the beach, I'm familiar with some of the houses on the beach. It seems as though, whether or not people have exercised their right to do something in the past, I don't know. It appears as though, in the past, people have built walls a certain length to surround their pool area perhaps, or something else, what I'll call their patio. It seems as though for your, this, and the ocean is a different area than our house on the, on the interior, because they have different rules, and I don't know exactly what their rules are. But their vistas to their north and south is very important to them, you know? And I don't know, you know, I hear what you're saying, well, we're in a new age, and the way people build houses and privacy. Are you saying they can build all the way, a wall all the way up to the end of their property?
Technically, they could.
Well, no, but in reality, nobody in the past has done that. Okay, most of those walls are pretty, whether it's been a practice, or the way we've done it, or like, I'm going to throw out a house, the Newman House, which is on 250 feet. He's got a big wall in front. What does his walls look like on the side?
Same, right. They go six feet to, they go six feet up to the pool deck area.
Yeah, in the back, it goes all the way to the back.
But the pool deck area isn't, I don't know, it's not...
But, but the pool deck area isn't, I, I don't know, it's not
It drops down at the end of the pool, and then it goes to two feet in the dunes area, like down, down before the bulkhead.
But how, how many, is it fifty-five?
They're all different, because don't forget, the depth of every lot on Ocean is unique to that lot. There is no standard depth on Ocean.
Well, I know, but it's
They all average
Two eighty-seven.
They all average, you know, if I were to take a guess, they're about fifty to fifty-five feet. I mean, look at, look at one hundred, one hundred goes almost eighty feet.
And then in this situation, just so you understand, this wall goes fifty-five feet. It could go probably double that. Uh, in act, had they come in for a
Fifty-five feet long?
No, fifty-five feet from the back of the house, out towards the water.
Right, fifty-five feet from the ocean.
They, the way the code reads, and, um, listen, that's a whole nother issue again. But the way the code reads today, and the way it's been interpreted today, and we think correctly so, is that you can go as far back as your pool patio deck goes. If it goes to your rear property line legally, then you could have a six foot wall there. They're only at, they're at fifty-five feet back from their house. But had they come in for a wall that was a hundred feet back, they probably would have gotten it. Now, if you don't like that result, then we can go and look at the code going forward and see, well, that doesn't seem like a very good idea, okay? And we can explore lengths and distances and heights and all of these things. But it, it, it's a much more complicated analysis when you get into that. Because heights now are also measured by the grade of your lot. So these lots are graded higher. So these walls, even if you, uh, yeah, come down to four feet, they may start at five or six feet higher. And you end up with walls like the seventeen foot walls, because you're measuring even that four feet from a filled lot. If you put in a retaining wall and fill your lot, and then put a wall on top of that
Right, a four foot wall could be eight feet.
Correct. It could be, it, it could be eight, it could be eight or ten feet on your side.
On the, on the old, it could be eight.
Right.
So there's two issues here.
Yeah.
There's one issue, which I see, understand, is that they, they feel like they're locked in because they have a wall all the way down, and I understand that. And it blocks their view if they want to look north or south on the beach, you know, it impairs their view. The second issue is the resident themselves that are building the property, they want privacy. So is there a happy medium where the people still could get privacy?
Yeah, their, their house may stay there for a long time, as they said, they, they both hope to go out on a gurney. But, um, but if they sold it, then what happens is they, somebody buys theirs, tears it down, and they fill their lot. They're going to have a higher wall than Cardone.
That's correct.
And it, and, and all of a sudden, Cardone is the old house. So, you know, this is a very hard balance to do this. It, it's, it's not a simple solution to solve these elevated homes as opposed to unelevated.
But like you said, that's a different issue.
It, it, it's, it's We, we, we have a situation where we have been sued. There's a claim that we have misinterpreted our code, okay? This, this is not a trick, but I'm telling you, the governments do this all day long. Where you have a situation like this, if there is some misunderstanding or interpretation, you simply clarify the code and amend it, and that moots out your lawsuits. It happens in, in municipalities all over the state. Up to the Supreme Court level, you can change the ordinance the day of your hearing, and you moot out the case, okay? So honestly, that's what we're doing. I don't want you to waste your time paying lawyers because we're fixing it, okay?
Well, Steve, I, I wouldn't say that you're fixing it.
There is a definite patio area.
No, we're fixing the legal claim, we're fixing the legal claim that you've asserted against us.
And part of it has to do with the selective enforcement.
Well, that, okay.
The town doesn't seem capable of saying no to our
Okay, that's a whole nother
Yeah, it's a whole different story, and I want to stay on this. I appreciate your opinion, any other comments?
I definitely have a few, or should you want to wait till after?
Well, may I just say one more thing?
But let's try to keep it to the ordinance
No, I, I agree.
All, all of the, all these comments are not helpful if we're going to end up in litigation, okay? This whole conversation, I, I asked you to please
The ordinance addressed the length of that
Okay, no, 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 yeah, I understand that, and that's okay. And I understand it's difficult to hold back, okay? Because there's allegations here, but, but, but I think
All the way through.
Okay.
The minute we saw that construction going up, and we saw the wall on the other side.
Yes.
It wasn't like the wall came up, and now we said, no, take it down.
No, and, and they were apprised of it, they understood exactly what was going on.
I need to keep the meeting going, I appreciate it. You guys are done, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I understand.
Can I ask a few questions?
Yes.
I'm not looking, I don't know really anything about the litigation, except for what was just discussed. Um, I do see, in addition to what the mayor was saying, when I looked at the photo though that was going on there, it looks like, it's not just a view, it looks like their property is now sort of like a box on one side, that they're kind of boxed in. I mean, just gives that appearance. And so, and listening to just the discussions right now, I'm a little confused. If you did not change the ordinance, would it be, would it not be a six foot wall that would be permitted? It would be a four foot wall? Or what would be the height of the wall?
No, it's the same.
It's the same.
We, uh, okay.
I'm saying if, if we didn't have the clarification, the, the interpretation that the city reviewer did before Alex
If you follow his interpretation, then if you followed the planner's interpretation of this code, you would have a wall at six feet to the back of the house, okay? And then drops down to four feet for the remainder of, actually, I don't know how many. It's basically the remainder of the, the distance to the water.
So we're only talking about a two foot
We're talking about two feet, this is not
This is only two feet.
I know it's imposing, but it's the top two feet that we're talking about when you get past the house.
Right, it's all about interpretation. What we're doing is trying to clarify the existing code, we're not changing anything.
We're not changing a thing. That's the way it's been applied, that's the way the manager applied it. We have a planner who decided that he read it differently, okay? That's all this is about.
While we're working on this though, it does seem like the idea that somebody could take a wall and run it all the way down to their property line of six feet above is disturbing to me.
If you, if you want to have
It's a different issue.
If you, it's a different issue. If you want to begin
It's a different issue, I don't want to discuss
If you want, if you want to have a discussion about walls, sidewalls, that's great. It has nothing to do with what, how this code is applied. If you think that this code should not be applied like this, then go ahead, change the heights, but do a study, evaluate what the proper things are, how far back, is it fifty-five, is it twenty-five, is it thirty-five? Do you want to go to the ocean at two feet? Do you want to come down? It, it's a whole analysis that needs to be done.
Just want to stay focused on this item.
Yes.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close it to the council, I'm sorry, you have something?
Very quick, uh, I sympathize, I sympathize with this, even though it's two feet imposing. And I'm looking at the pictures here. Um, obviously, I, what the town attorney is saying, I completely agree, the mayor, we just, this is first reading first of all, but we got to clarify. Besides that, have, and this is a separate issue again, has the town manager been able to speak to six oh five for some type of compromise? And you don't need to respond now, but I'm hoping that that's, that would be the case, and you guys could figure this out on that side. Uh, because right now, I, as the town attorney said, it's
The owner has been sued, the owner has been sued also.
Okay.
We would encourage them, the two neighbors, to get together and see if they can work it out, okay? As far as we're concerned, we're just trying to apply our code. But if there's a dispute between neighbors, that would be great. And if they agree to a different height, wonderful, we, we will accommodate them.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think the code, we're, the code's catching up to the new environments. Unfortunately, this is one of those that's sort of stuck. So it's really up to the two owners to sort of hammer this out if they could.
Is, would, would
Be careful what you say. Let's not get involved in the lawsuit, okay? And settling and all that, okay?
No, no, I was just going to ask about a change to the code, if, if, if they would have been happy with a change to the code, is that something I can?
Different issue, stay on this focus.
It is, it's a
No, no, I think that the issue here, I, 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 I don't know what, what would be satisfactory or not. I really don't know whether four feet is satisfactory to them or not, and whether that would, if you, you know. But that's, we have a certain set of facts that are not being dealt with here. That is a lawsuit that needs to be resolved one way or the other. Right now, we're trying to affirm what has been in place for years, and we do not believe is a misinterpretation by our manager. Maybe one of his staff members read it differently than he did, but that, and, and if that's the case, we don't want that to happen again.
Right.
Okay, we want to make sure that this thing is applied the way it's written.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close it
Can we just, I, I, I want to get a clear understanding of what we're saying. Are we saying that th, this four foot area, is that what's being litigated, or the length of how far this thing can go? The, it's both.
Height and length.
It's primarily the length. Because if you, it's, it's prim, what's being litigated primarily is the length.
Okay.
They're taking the position that that wall needed to drop down at the back of the house.
Okay.
Okay, we're saying no, the code allows that wall to continue at that height for the length of patios. Which is undefined.
That, that's the whole issue.
But which is undefined, we don't have, like, so going forward, we're going to have a code that says patios can be six feet, but we don't have a definition of how long a patio
Well, it's not
So a patio could go all the way up to the
No, we're not, we're not, we're not changing definitions. We are simply making it clear
No, no, I understand what I'm saying.
That the patio that we're talking about is a patio in the rear of the property. The way that our planner interpreted this was that patios meant patios in front of the back of the house. I've never heard of a patio in the front of the house.
I, I, I understand
That's why we disagree with our own planner. He, he, he's saying that basically, the word patio, as it's in the code, means that you can have a six foot wall to the back of the house, and also where patios are from the street to the back of the house, you can have a six foot wall there too. I, I don't, we don't know where he came up with that. Clearly, the patios mean the rear patio of a home. That's what we're talking about, so we're just clarifying that issue.
I appreciate that, but I'm just saying, now that we, we have this code
Yes.
In the future, someone on the next home could turn around and say
Exactly what these people are doing.
Or even more so, they could take the patio and say, my patio goes all the way to the property line. And so suddenly, the neighbor next door is going to have, not, not a step down as we intended in the code, it looks like. But you're going to have a, you could potentially have a six foot wall
Almost all the way back, at some point, you can't have structure back there. So it, it, it becomes dune and yard and not, not built up. So there would be a, a two foot portion, but it may only be for a small section.
Right, okay, with that, I'm going to close it to the council, everyone happy?
Uh, I'm, I'm just going to say this out loud before the vote. I'm going to vote in favor of it for right now, but I think the next time we come back, it needs to have greater clarification. Um, I think this is a very dangerous precedent to just say that we can go all the way down to the property line um, with a six foot wall. Like, I just think we need to define where patio, kind of where these step downs be, begin, and, uh, there should be some step downs there. And the fact that this has a step down, it makes me a little bit easy, and, and I realize it seems like it's only a two foot difference, but, um, I do think that
We agree, we agree.
And, and I, I, I'm in agreement
We agree.
With the same, we're just doing this as the first reading.
Correct.
Well, no, understand, I, I want to be clear. That if you want to explore changes to the code that change the code and are going to provide, maybe you want to go back to the planner's interpretation and say the wall stopped at the house. And then it has to come down, and then you decide how high. That, that's a separate thing from simply clarifying what we have existing today, okay? That's the exercise here, okay? If you decide that that's a really bad code provision, then talk to me, and we can come in, and we can amend the code going forward.
And, and as I said, just personally
Yes.
I, I think there needs to be some work on this, I hope that
But thi, thi, this is not going to change.
No.
The code, what he's saying, we can come back and change the code on that, this is not going to change. This is just clarifying for the way it is, then we, and then
But once you put this in there, the next person that brings in their house
Yes.
lands the next day
That's what the pressure was, to bring that up.
And if you want to, and if you want to direct us today to start a process of amending the code, to start changing wall heights and distances, we'll do that.
Know, know this, the manager, the mayor and the manager have been working with the attorney to start to clean up issues that we're identifying in zone one. You have our commitment that as part of that cleanup of zone one issues, we will, we will add to that process separate and apart from this process, depth of heights for rear yard fences. We'll, we'll address it in that process.
Okay, um, but again, I, I think for, for where that comes in the second vote, I'm voting this in favor of this with the hope that there's some
Fine, whatever. Okay, with that, I'm going to close it to the council, close it to the public. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, just so you understand, what Councilman Bernstein brings up, a good point is, this is a housekeeping item, basically. And, you know, we will bring back and look at the code regarding setbacks and everything. But for now, this is just a housekeeping item. So don't feel like you've lost your, your battle. With that, we'll move on to quasi addendum resolution, there are none, consent agenda, there's two items. Minutes of the January twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five regular town council meeting, and a resolution to town council approving a criminal justice user agreement between the da, uh, town of Golden Beach and Miami Dade Sheriff's Office. Those two items, the consent agenda, all approve in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Consent agenda passes. Town resolution, item number five, resolution of town council approving a change order to Tweedle Park Pump Station retrofit project with southeast, excuse me, engineering.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, approving change orders to the Tweedle Park Pump Station retrofit project with Southeastern Engineering, Inc., providing for implementation and providing for an effective date.
Uh, this is a change order with, uh, several items regarding the pump station. Uh, the, the resolution's pretty much self-explanatory, any comments?
Is this the station that's on
Right here, the one right here.
Okay.
Any comments? Any public comments? Okay, uh, roll.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the motion.
I'm sorry, taking my motion to approve?
Motion, Bruce.
I need a second.
Second.
What's that? Oh, okay, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Einstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Make your note, Councilman Bernstein stepped out.
Yes, sir.
Item number oh six, a resolution of town council appointing members to the Wellness Center Construction Selection Committee.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Golden Beach, Florida, appointing members to the town of Golden Beach Wellness Center Construction Selection Committee, providing for implementation and providing an effective date.
Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second.
Town manager?
Mr. Mayor, there's the name missing off this item. We're trying to, we're trying to identify a fifth member for the committee. I, I'm preferably looking for a female resident to serve, because right now it's three males and, and, and Linda. But like I mentioned earlier, yeah, you have a phone?
Evelyn, Evelyn Mendel? Evelyn Brill, I, I don't know what her last name is. Evelyn Brill, or, or Pro?
If she
Yes, my sister.
It
I don't know what her legal name is at this point, too.
Sure, why not, you're coming up the council anyways.
You don't know your sister's name?
She got divorced and she changed it, I know she changed it back, she's not
Wait, your sister got divorced? She, they split up?
No, 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 that's, uh, a long time ago.
And, all right, so we'll talk, we'll, we'll, we'll All right, I'll ask her. So this committee will meet once and once only, and their role will be to evaluate the proposals that we get and make
Please don't put that on the record, by the way.
And make a recommendation to the mayor and I as to which of those, as, as to which of the bidders were successful. And then the mayor and I will take that committee's recommendation and bring to the council a, a contract for approval for the Wellness Center construction.
One time they're going to meet?
They're going to meet once, it's a one time meeting.
Okay.
Any comments, council comments?
The, by the way, the members are, at this point, it is, and I did what you asked me to, he said no. Uh, it's Jerry Hollow, uh, Eric Cohen, Ricardo Huff and Linda Epperson, and Evelyn, whatever her last name is.
TBD.
Any public comments? Roll call, please, you have a public comment?
Yeah.
Here's going.
It's nice to be back. It's nice to be back in the town of Golden Beach. All this discussion brings back great memories for me, I just want to say. The reason why I loved it, serving for four years, and the reasons why sometimes it was challenging. My only question is, I'm not bidding as a general contractor. My only question is, is your selection committee made up of residents who are in the construction industry? Who have the ability
Yes.
All the way across the board?
Yes.
In the construction, from architectural to actual contractors.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Roll call please.
Mayor Singer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Einstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Bernstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Luskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Mendel.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, discussion items?
Mister Mayor, before we go into the discussion item, I, I just wanna real quick, 'cause it's important for the council, I ca- I've mentioned it like five times, let's, I put on, onto the screen. So one of the things that we're working on, and I want you guys to understand the complexity of Zone One. So, right now, your code says that if I, if I'm gonna build on this lot, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna tear down this house, right, my line has to go like this, because this home sits so far, this home sits so far west. Know that the town- So we're, we're doing zoning in progress, and I just wanted to explain to you guys what's going on on Zone One, and I'm sorry that the audience left. But in Zone One, what your rules say today is that you go to your northernmost lot and your southernmost lot, and you build a line, and that's where you could build a home. If I were to tear down this house, and I wanna build on that lot, I'm no longer able to build all this space, because this house sits so far west.
That's our code, that's the code today.
So the, yes, so the town attorney and I are working on a way to identify the depth of construction in Zone One, which is a far greater issue than this wall issue. Because what we're trying to do is, is create a line that allows us to, to say, okay, this is where you could build your home. Because if I buy a lot, and there's a home that's so far west, because it's so small, I'm now not allowed to develop that area, and so I'm devaluing that property because of its constructibility. And so with a lot of respect to our older homes, know that the town attorney has been directed to work to find a solution, and that's why it's very complex. So we can have a, a, a uniform line of construction. During that process, we will identify the depth of walls. I didn't wanna get too fu- too deep into this, but you could see how it would be very punitive for a lot of the older homes that sit so far west, for me to buy a house and not be, not be able to build, because that home dictates where I'm allowed to start my home. And so, yes, this home may suffer, because we're gonna allow construction to go there, but we shouldn't be penalizing someone, because there are older homes that weren't built out to the maximum capacity. So know, again, we, through zoning in progress, we will be accepting applications on a case-by-case basis to determine how homes are designed on Zone One as it relates to the rear lot line, and the town attorney's currently working it. I just wanted to demonstrate to you some of the challenges that we're having with our own code today. And know that the wall depth will be identified as part of this solution. So as the attorney's working to identify how far east you could build your home in Zone One, we will also look at the walls, and I just wanted to put that into the record, on a separate matter.
You're right, that seems like a much, much even bigger issue, and-
It is.
And to me, it seems like, yeah, I mean, first glance, I would think we would just come up with an objective line of say-
You, you can't.
You can't, it's not that easy.
Because you can see the curvature here.
It changes everywhere.
So it, it changes as, with each lot, and likewise-
All different lengths.
Yeah, no, I, I get it.
And likewise, with the length of the house, you can see that in some instances, it really wouldn't matter how wall, i- if you can build a house this far back and this high, who cares about a six-foot wall here?
No, you're right.
Because the house is gonna completely block somebody's-
And, and although-
Up this picture?
And although this, and although, and although, this is, this is just one example, and I, I wanted to find somewhat an extreme example, but you could tell, and Mayor, I know this is not needed, I just wanna briefly-
What'd you say?
So, so what we're, so, yes, it's code designated.
Right.
So just know that, so know that these type of issues are bigger issues, and the mayor, that's why I kept on saying, the mayor has directed the town attorney, we're working with the attorney, we'll solve this, and we'll work on walls, on a separate matter. As it relates to our beach pavilion, our beach pavilion rules. So I wanted to talk-
Just before you finish-
Yes, please, absolutely.
To me, this might be, not just here, but with new construction of new homes and old homes, and the transition, with, you know, flood levels and everything changing, I just think these might be our, some of our most important conversations going forward.
Scroll this way?
Yeah, could you go all the way up?
And, and, and more important-
Okay, so these, how, that house there.
So, so it, it, look, this property may be coming down, and you can see that this house sits all the way far back. So right now, the line goes this way, right?
And that's all he's allowed to do.
Correct.
Under the current, under the current code, correct.
So we're gonna be looking at setting an established depth of home for Zone One. And so just know that that's a much greater issue than the wall issue.
I agree.
You remember-
Be warned.
Can, can we maybe start-
The back of the home is here.
Making this a big priority going forward?
We have, we, we, and I've announced it at the B R E B.
I've announced it at the last council meeting.
But know that this is a much bigger issue than that little wall.
I, I agree.
If you remember, this started to be a problem ten, fifteen years ago, I'm sure Linda remembers, with Pepetti. He felt like he fell in a hole between the two houses and it-
That, that's, that's-
And not only that, the difference between the bigger lots and the fifty-foot lots also.
But, but just so we're, we're clear, that, that issue here that we were just discussing, this, this would be technically the end of the house, okay? So the wall would then drop down to four feet all the way back here, okay? The, the permit has been allowed to go fifty-five feet to about here, I believe.
Yeah, it's up to the-
So that, and then it steps down to four feet.
Correct.
And comes here. So, the issue is this portion right here, um, whether that needed to be at four feet or at six feet.
That's a different issue.
Yeah.
That, that, that is the issue that, that is in dispute.
But our code says currently, it can be- Can I ask a, a different question?
Yeah.
So, I know theoretically, in between houses, you're supposed to have a certain height of your trees or your shrubs, right?
No, the town council eliminated height of side yard shrubs in Zone One, you could go a hundred foot in the air if you want.
So, technically, if they don't have a wall there, they could put, uh-
A hundred foot shrub, even with the wall, you're allowed to have that. Even with the wall, your shrub could go a thousand feet in the air. You do not have a, the council eliminated that height of side yard landscaping. Very interesting point that you identified.
Okay, can we go on?
Yes, so as it rela- as it relates, so there's a couple of issues that I wanted to bring to the councils, and we're gonna try to be brief. But we're having more and more discussions as it relates to parties-
We'll talk about that soon.
Do they have to have this protected by the pool, pool area? Don't they have to have a wall there anyway?
Well, yeah, there's fencing, fencing.
A fence, okay.
Alright, so as it relates to, to the beach pavilion, so we're starting to see a, a couple of things that we wanna a- address head-on. Because our, I think that our residents have, have enjoyed our beach pavilion in our liberal interpretation of the rules for, for quite some time now, and we're gonna start setting some stricter parameters. And so I wanna make it clear to the residents. So we're seeing a lot of applications for people who are having parties to wanna set up the day before, because they throw these elaborate parties. And now you're not affecting the residents one day, you're affecting the residents two days. We're putting an end to that. If you cannot decorate your party the day of your party, then you need to go to the J C C or somewhere else to do your event. We're not gonna be allowing you to set up the night before and impose on our residents the fact that you're taking ownership of our beach pavilion for more than one day. So you could set up your party two hours before the event, three hours maybe, have your event, and call it a day. Uh, we're not gonna be allowing elaborate designs of our beach. I think that those days need to be tailored down. When these elaborate designs are put into our beach, they really decay the useful life of our facilities, just this past weekend, they hung over five hundred pounds of weight on our trusses with these big ornamental planters and stuff. Um, and the idea is, if you're gonna enjoy our beach pavilion, it's because of the beauty of the beach pavilion. Nice table, maybe a centerpiece, but no more, you know, changing the design of our beach pavilion, so you could throw these very elaborate parties that really affect the, the beach pavilion. I, I wanted to get the council's input on this, because I don't wanna take this unilateral decision on my own. But the idea is, one, if you're gonna have a party, you could set up the day of and tear down the day of, no more two-day events where you're setting up the night before, you know, and tying up our pavilion for two days, that's number one. Number two, I think that we, the council needs to make a decision very, a concerted effort to define who can use our beach pavilion. We're seeing the cousins of a nephews of the landscapers, mothers, brothers, sisters, wanna use it, because they're my friends for years. And so the, the, the town administration strongly feels, and, and, and listen, I'm the gay guy in the room, right, so I could define family. But who should be able, and to us, it's immediate family, right? So that's your brother, your sister, your uncle, your cousins, you know. If it's somebody who has an alternative lifestyle, we'll decide what that meaning is. But you can't have, like we've seen recently, have your neighbor come in and apply for a permit, saying that it's their cousin who's gonna use the pavilion, and when we ask the neighbor, who is it, I have no idea, they just wanted me to sign the permit for them.
I don't think it's fair.
It's not right, it's not fair. Um, and so, and so I think that we need to start, you're gonna get tons of complaints about me, but if it's not your immediate family member, your children, your brothers or your sisters, your mother, your father, you can't use our beach pavilion. The other thing is, it's a slap in the face to our residents that we're, that we're allowing multiple applications by the same household, because the fact is, if you're gonna go to the J C C and rent a room, there's twenty thousand dollars, and to rent my beach, our, not mine, our beach pavilion, is five hundred dollars. We charge five hundred dollars to throw a, this past week, it was a seventy-five thousand dollar decor-only contract for the beach, and we charged five hundred dollars. And so the, the, the rental fee for our beach pavilion needs to be reevaluated. I think that, that, you know, even if you double that, it, it's still not, you know, a, a way to discourage people from using the beach pavilion. Right now, your parties are three hours long, we have been allowing, we've been allowing four to five hours, but I think we need to say, this is, if you want it, this is what you get, if you don't like it, then you go somewhere else. But it's been very difficult. I will tell you that we have seen a, a surround, a, 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 surrounding effort to lower the music this past week. We make sure there's no extra basses brought in, we're not allowing amplifier or booms. Um, in fact, we, I was there on Friday, they did a phenomenal job. They're now bringing just the speaker, not the, the boom, 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 so we're seeing that go away, which has been a big, big effort. Um, and we are setting, the police knows that if they hear it at the sidewalk, they need to lower it down. And in that, th- this past wedding, or, that, Ba'ath Misva, they lowered it twice. So we're seeing more compliance on the noise factor. The other thing is, strict rules on Sundays, I mean, we're seeing too many requests for Sundays. Uh, and in fact, the rule for Sunday is that you have to be a strict observant, observer of the Sabbath, not to use, to be able to grant the beach, uh, to use the beach on a Sunday. And I know that there's a bacon-eating, cellphone-carrying member of our community on Saturdays who's walking around, who was able to get a rabbi to sign the letter, saying they, they observe the Sabbath, therefore they should go to have the beach on Sundays, and I'm like, I know for a fact he had pepperoni the other day, uh, on the pizza at our beach pavilion. So we've gotta become stricter on Sunday use, Sunday really disrupts the quality of our beachgoers' ability at the beach. So, I, I, I need your guidance, what do you want me to do? Because I, I'm gonna be the mean guy, you're gonna get the complaints. But I think it's time for us to really refocus our efforts to try to minimize the impact on our beach pavilion. That's my discussion item, Mister Mayor.
I, I like everything you said, and additionally, just some other things along the way. They're starting so early, and they block the, the pathway for the-
Yeah.
Police vehicles, for the bikes, nobody can get through.
Even to the beach?
Yeah, to the beach, you can't, so we, we need to make sure that whenever they're doing it, that there needs to be ingress and egress available.
Also, yeah, I agree with Councilman Bernstein, also, I think we should raise the fee to twenty-five hundred. I mean, town manager and I were talking about it, and, uh, the wear and tear on the beach pavilion is ridiculous, with the bathrooms and just the, the structure of the building. And, you know, think about it, twenty-five hundred's not a lot of money to rent a hall or an event. And it's not gonna cover all our costs, but it definitely helps more than five hundred dollars.
You know, is there, is there a possibility to do difference between a kid's party that we-
That's the only thing, Glenn, you know, I, I had kids that, that I did a lot of parties for, and it just, it was a great venue. And I think if we can differentiate in some way, in some capacity, somebody spends seventy-five thousand, I don't know if they, we can somehow verify-
It gets too complicated, what we should do is just come up with a fair number. If it's not twenty-five hundred, maybe it's fifteen hundred, okay? But you can't separate them from ki-
No, I'm saying maybe-
Cause a kid's party is probably more, uh, hurtful to the pavilion than a grown-up party. Kids throw sand in the toilet, they, I've seen it before, right? I mean, the kids' party are more destructive than a grown-up's party. Just, just pick a fee, a flat fee, and stick with it, but five hundred dollars, like the town manager, is too cheap.
Well, why don't you come in, make some recommendations, and we can all look at them before our next meeting and discuss them?
Well, he's looking for us for suggestions.
We, we, we've done that in the past, and it's gone nowhere, so, um, you know, look, to rent any salon, even in Hialeah, for like, you know, my niece's quinceañera, you're paying ten, fifteen thousand dollars for that banker hall.
You go to Chuck E. Cheese, paying for it.
Is that still open?
What about the usage, every weekend, every other weekend?
That, that's employed, right? You can only use the-
No, so you're only, so, so your rules cur- you're allowed to have one every Saturday.
One every Saturday?
La- Saturdays have no, no, no blocking, no, it's only, it's only one Sunday a month, the, the, so the, the limitation is one Sunday a month.
But every Saturday?
However, when you have a rabbi that signs the letter, you know, we try this, we try to make those accommodations, because you have, you have our residents that are really pushing their weight around, you know, that they can't do it on a Saturday, because their, their families observe, and they need to have it on a Sunday. Uh, the mayor and I were talking about limiting, if we're gonna allow it on a Sunday, allow it on a Sunday night, or, or later in the afternoon, so it doesn't impact the beachgoers, so maybe you start at three or four.
No, we said five.
Oh, yeah, or five.
Every Sunday?
No.
No, 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 no.
Once a month.
But when, when we do the Sundays, um, limit the number of Saturdays maybe, and, and force more during the weekday versus the weekend.
I agree, I, I, on that stuff.
And, and immediate fa- immediate family members.
You have the ability for a kid's party on the tot lot, right?
Yes, you do.
And we could change the fees for that.
Yeah, well, the tot, we're not looking at imposing a, a higher fee for the tot lot, but I think that the, the beach pavilion is where we're seeing most of the impact. Listen, we, if we wanna have an event in Tweedle Park every day, we welcome it. It, it doesn't impact anyone, not even the neighbors, and, and, and the Islanders are gonna kill me, killer, said that, but it really doesn't. I mean, they're there, kids' parties last an hour and a half to two hours, no one's at a kid's party six hours. I mean, the kids wanna get out of there after an hour and a half, you've, you've seen it, and in fact, you're gonna see it next week, I think it is. But the kids' party in Tweedle Park doesn't bother anyone, no harm, no foul, at the beach pavilion, you have all these kids running around, making noise, the DJs and all, it, it's a big production. I mean, we had two hundred people there on, for, last Fri- last, last Friday.
Great point, great point.
Are, are the parties Saturday and Sundays, are they, and Fridays, are they more elaborate usually than a midweek?
No, they're all, listen, I, I don't know what it is, but they're all elaborate. I mean, some of the stuff that I've seen come into town, I mean, you don't even have the best buddy ceremonies. I mean, people are bringing in these very elaborate decors and, you know, making coffee on site with these carts and, you know, all this, all this other stuff, you know, they, they bring in these big things, and it's not our beach pavilion, I mean, the idea of the beach pavilion is that you're enjoying a, a beautiful beach venue, period and a story. If you wanna decorate the hell out of it, do it somewhere else.
Would you consider resident-dominated versus-
Well, the mayor, listen, what, more and more of what we're seeing is a stretch. If it's somebody's kids' Ba'ath Misva, that's an easy identifiable. Mrs. Porges got, Porges got married, that's easy. But it's when it's my, my best friend that I knew from college, you know, and, and she's, she's my sister.
The town, the town manager and I caught someone lying to us, and they felt so bad they were lying to us. The next day, they came in and admitted they were lying to us, that they said they were having a party.
I've had people come up to me, oh, it's so nice that we got to do a thing at your pavilion, we enjoyed it so much, and I went-
Who are you?
Why, why don't we make some suggestions?
It's like, are you kidding?
Why don't we make some suggestions? I'm sorry, you wanna say? Yeah, come up to the phone.
So, thank you, sorry, I know I met with a few of you, and, uh, you know, I've been hesitant to build- Building the house because of this, um, you know, we've been waiting on contracts to come in, and the amount of money that it was gonna be to build this, and then not to be able to live there was a big deterrent, but things have gotten better, and we're more than likely going to build and move forward. I mean, I'm not, you know, we're going to make a decision the next month or two. But I just wanted to, I know I've had individual discussions with each of you, but I have provided and I'm happy to re-provide recommendations. I'd like to just name a few of them that, to, to, to the, the council that I'm happy to provide again. But I did a lot of research on many cities that are the equivalent of Golden Beach and there are very few that allow what happens in this community in terms of free for all parties, crazy noises. I mean, you're very good at cutting things off at the right time and I'm glad to hear that now you're starting to limit the noises. But, you know, when you say there's 200 people at a party, technically you're only allowed to have 70. Those things make a big difference. If you're only allowed to have 70, you're not going to have a huge blowout. Having incredible boom boxes all the time or one every weekend, it makes it impossible. You know, I met someone that lives across the street and I asked them to join me and they decided to sell their house where they said, oh, we hear the noises too and it drives us insane. And I, I think you have quite a lot of people that live around the beach pavilion that feel the same way. They haven't expressed it as much as I have because maybe I'm a pain in the ass, but it is what it is. And I'm, I'm just begging you to continue the direction that you've been going and I don't think it's unreasonable. I think people should have birthday parties for kids. I, you know, I don't know about the sand, but I, I, I agree that if somebody wants to have a $500 party during the day, that should be different than, I mean, friends of mine are throwing weddings there, they're spending $100,000 on, like you said, and it's insane. I, I just don't understand it, so.
Mayor, why don't I do this? Why don't I?